Yeah, I'll take some of that.
Let's get a second.
Okay.
Real quick, Richard.
Second.
Here we go.
Yeah.
Discussion. Thank you. Sorry.
Discussion would be on the accounts payable. I've talked to several people, you know. I'm not saying it's wrong to buy a ten dollar and seventy cent cup of coffee, but it's a little expensive for taxpayers to, you know, if this is their meal, I guess that's okay. But I think where the county is gonna have to go to setting up some kind of a per diem, you know, per meal or per daily, uh, just to protect ourselves. I think that's it.
That would work well.
No, that would work well.
Greg and I are working on.
Okay.
On that point, Richard, you know, we also spoke about, I think it's important when we make any changes to um, per diem or the pay for meals that we should try to calculate some way where it changes depending on where you are. Cause meals in loin are different than a meal at an April conference. Think of that.
And the way a lot of them do it, they do it by zip code.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something to look into.
You know, it's something, it's something to look into and, uh, you know, uh, as I sit here and read through some of this, I'm going, and then another thing we're getting hit with is sales tax. You know, on some things and we shouldn't, there's forms and things that can be filled out, sent to the vendor. You know, we don't pay sales tax. So.
Yep. And I will say, I believe it's the IRS. IRS has a portal where you can type in your zip code and it tells you what the current monthly or like daily per diem for food would be.
Excellent. Use that.
GSA, it's a government, government contract.
Yes. Yep. Um, so it's something that we've looked at in our office before. Um, so I, I have all that information. I'm gonna talk to Amber about it as well. Um, I will say, um, we did have a few incidences, instances of sales tax, um, in this accounts payable. A lot of it was on these purchases for meal reimbursement. So something else I think we probably should look at is having anybody who's going on a conference or training using their personal credit card and then only charging the county back for the meal. Not charging back tip, which I haven't seen, but definitely that takes the sales tax out of it.
Sure.
I'm sure you guys will figure it out in a phase. Thank you.
There was, uh, the minutes I sent out there, they had a slight error on it. Um, Jack, the motion to adjourn was wrong. So I fixed that. So those, the ones that you'll sign did air correct.
Okay. Got to get the adjournment. Any other discussion? Any and all was in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Just signature.
Do we have no liquor license?
No, no liquor license.
Thank you. Any public comment at this time?
Oh, of course, Lonnie.
Chris, of course.
Uh, I guess following up what Mr. Crouch just said about wise use of taxpayer money. Obviously I opened the mail yesterday and was rather disappointed to see another fifteen hundred dollar increase in taxes on top of the five or six thousand over the last couple of years. So it's just compounding itself and, uh, we gotta do something to get it under control. End of comment.
Thank you.
I just want to, um, applaud the additional narrative that you guys are creating regarding the accounts payable. And just an idea that, um, if the county moves forward and has standardized reviews for all areas, all managers and departments, that perhaps that through the review process, those regular repeated offenders, it can be noted that, uh, they aren't complying with what county's policy is. And if we are a somewhat merit-based system, then you know, their performance should, uh, key into what their review process is as well as their increases. And then, um, last week when the TIF discussion occurred, I was under an incorrect impression because of the discussion that there was actual cash that was involved that got diverted to repay TIF. So I um, would applaud the, the board and, uh, somehow communicating to the community that it was a reporting issue that did impact those people that were responsible for budgeting, uh, within their roles. However, there was no cash received, um, through our processes that didn't get then paid out properly. And, uh, you know, so that nobody thinks that, you know, money got used wrong or uh, that it created, you know, a full financial impact. But I'm sure, you know, the, the school and even the county, you know, people missed having that money come through when they were expecting it for their, their budget.
For sale. Thank you. Uh, any other public comment? Any more, Chris?
No.
Uh, supervisor meeting update. Uh, last week I attended ISAC. Uh, that was a great conference again. I always come out there and learn something. I was also, uh, appointed to the, uh, as chairman, president.
President.
Of the Iowa State Association of County Supervisors. So that was an honor. Had some great meals and, uh, it was just, uh, good to see everybody throughout the state visit. That's all I have.
And, uh, Richard and Lonnie were out down at ISAC. I was pulling the fork down here. At a landfill meeting, board adjustment meeting on Tuesday, conditional use permit review. Additional use permit was granted back in twenty twenty. It was set to be reviewed in twenty twenty one, but it kind of fell through the cracks with the changes in the office at the time and with COVID and a few other things. So we're working on getting that back on the schedule. Uh, that day, Deshaun, the county attorney, sent us a letter saying that we should postpone the meeting uh, until we have Matt Wyatt come in next week to talk about whether or not they should have outside legal counsel and whether we should grant that. So that will be postponed for now. Additionally, last week had the economic development meeting Thursday morning. Nothing really new to report there. It was a quick meeting. Um, talked through the different projects they're working on. And I know they mentioned that they met with you, Lonnie, and they met with me maybe a month or two ago and that they're working on meeting with you, Richard. I, uh, I for one really appreciate that. I think it's good for them to meet with us individually. Um,
Conversations.
Absolutely.
They have a problem finding a restaurant to talk to.
Yeah, yeah.
On Monday.
They took me to Toby Jack's. It's tough. Um, then that evening I had a super board meeting with the school district and the city and the county. Nothing really new to report with the city. Still, they're trying to focus on what to do with the pool situation. Uh, they're talking to their legal counsel. They're actually using Ayers and Cooney to, uh, to try and figure out what to do with that. And then the school, of course, started this week. They're all very excited to have kids back. And, um, I thought it's very interesting. They touted their new programs that are going on at the Hill. They are going to be doing an educational program for students who uh, would like to be in education. Instead of a different other career, they can start taking courses while they're in high school. And then they also have an ag precision course. I think that's pretty important. So as a kid, I was able to take college classes throughout high school and junior high. And I think it's important for those who don't wanna go to college to, uh, look at other avenues for a career. And then on Sunday night, I heard the unfortunate news that the, uh, longtime conservation board member of twenty years, Lana White passed away. So she passed away on Sunday night. I will, uh, keep you guys up to date if there is a funeral or anything of that nature. So I have.
Hey. Well, the main thing went on for me last week was, was the meeting of, uh, ISAT. Uh, we had some great meetings. We met with the auditors, which is, you know, we generally stick with ourselves. Traders, auditors, supervisors, we generally meet, but we had meetings with the auditors, discussed some things with them. Uh, also had, uh, a panel of assessors come in and try to ex- uh, explain on how everything works and which we're all sitting there scratching our heads cause. But, uh, the big issue that is coming in is mental health. Still, the problem is they cannot find people to work. Uh, several CEOs and stuff have anywhere from thirty-six to forty-four counties to cover. And, uh, the state seems to think that, uh, one person per four counties is enough.
Can't handle it.
And, uh, we've got people that's going under the rug right now. And we've got people that are being jailed. Uh, you know, reports and things and it's just, it's just ugly. But they seem to think they're gonna have it handled because everybody's gonna get a cell phone. And everybody, every community is going to have a bright shiny door. And when one of the supervisors asks what, where, where are these bright shiny doors gonna be? And the gentleman who was putting on the program, he says, well, that's kind of up to the community, wherever they wanna put it. So that's, that's the kind of answers you get. Uh, and then also had a meeting with, uh, regional mental health here. Believe it or not, we're still getting bills from people that's been, it's been closed down since, uh, uh, first of July. Uh, we still got scheduled two more meetings. To try and get this all terminated by the first of the year. Uh, had a meeting with Nister Productions uh, last night and we have our new house. It took seven and a half months to build in Essex, Iowa. This gentleman builds all the frames and stuff in his shop and grizzled, hauls them down, sets them in place, cuts almost two months of framing work and stuff. Cause it's already done. Uh, we'll be moving in in September fifteenth is opening day for it. So we're real proud of that. And then we're also gonna build another one in Red Oak. I think we're in the neighborhood of fourteen homes right now that we're building, taking care of and putting clients in because Woodward don't want to do with them. I mean, they were moved there from the resource center to Woodward. Now they're gonna move them out again. And the transition from one place to another.
It's not good.
It's not good.
What, uh, about how many bedrooms are those average, Richard?
We, we go four to six.
Okay.
Uh, depending on the area.
Sure.
And the number of people. The house in Essex will be four. One in Red Oak, I think it's going to be six. Things. So, and we're looking, we, we're trying to put them out in the communities to help out, especially like Essex. Uh, we bought two nice lots for about, oh, twenty thousand dollars to build on. Only thing, uh, the city did come in and supply a, a gas line that we thought we was gonna have to pay for and which would have been about twenty-five thousand dollars. So they put it in force. And the last thing I have is I was asked to go to a CO2 pipeline meeting. Okay. The CO2 pipeline is kind of at a standstill, you might say they are looking at different routes. You know, chasing it across different states. There are seven states involved with this. And what's going to the Supreme Court for Mr. Kinkle or Shelby County is the ordinances and things that we have put in place as counties. Supreme Court is going to rule on them for all seven states, whether they're good or bad. You know, if they rule against us, I guess we start all over. I don't know. But we could be asked to be like, maybe put up a thousand dollars to help pay for some of the lawyer fees and stuff going into this. I says, I'd have to bring it to the board, but, uh, it could be a real mess. And they hope to get this done by end of the year.
Is the court accepted the appeal to, to go to the Supreme Court? Have they accepted the, the case?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. They, uh, there's some terminology I don't understand.
What's that?
No, half pipeline ordinances when it comes to CO2.
CO2.
No. But any, any of the ordinance, they're gonna look at all the ordinances you have.
All of them?
Yes. And I'm going, oh, this is gonna be, but when you're looking at seven states, how do you? You got ninety-nine counties here. I don't know. I'm gonna say there'll probably be forty, fifty counties in Illinois.
Each county is different, little by little.
And, and each one is different. So how do you throw all these things together and come up with one?
Each county and each state can do, have different jurisdictions. That's.
If there's local control still.
That's gonna be a can of worms.
Yeah. I'll keep you posted on what is due.
Okay. Since Jacob Ferrari is not here.
You're stuck with me.
We have you.
Um, also we had, I think, with the road maintenance grant, the resolution twenty-five, twenty-three. And my understanding is that Mills County is gonna do mowing, snow removal and sign maintenance on a hundred and eighty-nine. And we'll do day-to-day on bungee, but in repairs that are over ten thousand, Council of Us is gonna pay half of that. And then a hundred and ninety-second has completely, Council of Us and Pot County. So we're not gonna miss that.
And I'm sure the county attorney office has been somewhat involved in this.
Need maintenance?
Yep.
I don't think you've seen the road maintenance.
I know Jake's given us, he, he's briefed us on it here and there on what they were working on. So he, he seems happy with it. So that's an important thing.
No, it's, it's definitely fair, especially we're not getting stuck. If there's a fifty thousand dollar repair on bungee, we don't have to pay for it ourselves.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're just gonna hop on it. I think our share is pretty fair.
It's, if you know, a hun- yeah, it's a hundred percent fair. Yeah.
Yes. Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash twenty-three road maintenance agreement between Mills County and the city of Council of Us.
I'll second that.
I'm motioning a second to approve resolution twenty-five, twenty-three, the road maintenance agreement between Mills County and the city Council of Us. Is there any discussion? Eric, now let's do a roll call vote.
Sayers.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Avery.
Yes. Motion carries. Hope it's good.
What's your take? I think Jake has talked to all three of us about it, you know, how they wanted to set it up and how it would be set up, you know, and I had a few discussions with some, uh, Pop County supervisors, you know, how we was taking them through the cleaners on this or that. I'm going, you guys are not even involved in this.
Right.
The Council of Us.
I said, it's the city accounts of us. Well, they're in our county.
It had nothing to do with that, yeah.
I, oh.
You know, probably, probably either.
It was Council of Us decision to do it too. So.
I was also criticized on our, uh, agreement.
That was our.
Had, had one guy tell me, he says, well, you guys, you guys are pretty steep on that second go around. I said, well, get your act together.
I need to go and then I'll house hillside tomorrow. Okay. So, so that's gonna be back.
In a thirty day.
So the supervisors aren't so happy up there about it.
Uh, just a couple of them.
Well, it's, it's their job to get a new engineer.
Hey. There's no problem. I, well, then in thirty days you should have.
Any general discussion for us?
I don't have anything.
All right. Well, it's good to see you.
Good to see you too.
Thank you very much.
Do you wanna commend you on taking over safety? I mean.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. No, I think it's a great deal.
Yeah, I don't, it'll be good.
Tell, tell Kevin and Jake they should send you more often.
I will.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Morning, Mr. Schultz.
How are you? This is tough to do.
Behind you?
Yeah. Um, just to follow up on that conversation with Richard brought up earlier. This is, they talk about the per diem rates, fiscal years, like the state. Let's pretend in December, we're headed down to Miami.
Or, or not pretend that.
Uh, just hypothetically.
Miami, Oklahoma.
Completely, completely.
We're not going.
Hypothetical. Um, you can just find the rates. And basically what they're gonna come right out and tell you is that if you're gonna be per diem rate in Miami in twenty twenty-five, January, it's gonna cost you two hundred and ten dollars a day per diem.
Or hotel.
I know. That, that is, that is meals. That is not.
That is meals?
That is meals. Um, and a- as, as we sat, as we sit down and, and I, Jack and I just had a really good conversation and we're already talking about it. Um, we, I've got, I've sent a couple. I know somebody out there's already doing this. So I reached out to Council of Us, reached out to Montgomery County. They both have uh, programs in place already. Um, I've got a couple of different options we're gonna look at. We're gonna try and build something that makes sense for us. Um, so we're working on that. Um, just quite frankly, and, uh, the, the other reason, my general discussion, one thing I wanted to bring up is I wanted to give a shout out first to Tina, cause she's been helping us out a ton.
Good.
In the office making this transition with Sabrina leaving, um, but also to Amber and to Katie. Because there's a lot of questions. I have a lot of questions. They have lots of follow-up. Um, as we're going through the process and they've been extremely helpful and I appreciate that. Um, but a- as we go through and as I've learned, the, the credit card reconciliation process, um, I am all in favor of switching over to a per diem. Uh, because tracking receipts and then making sure we had receipts to go through to the right place.
Great.
Um, you know, one, one, one class could be, uh, fif- fifteen meal receipts plus a hotel receipt plus a couple of gas receipts. Um, I quite frankly, uh, lost my stuff. Looking at this, this.
Yeah.
And, uh, we, we, we're gonna be moving in the right direction. These guys have been busy this, this week.
Yep.
Um, so we're, we're gonna try to put something together, you know, late this week or first thing next week. Um, and hopefully have something to you guys sooner than later.
Well, I, I think it's the only fair way to do it for, for all the departments. I mean, cause you don't know where you're gonna have to travel.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, and, and I think a- a- as I mentioned, a- as importantly, when, when I look at this.
Where do you have in Iowa? Am I typing right? Yep, you're good.
When you look at what Iowa has, you know, twenty twenty-five, one twenty-one. So a significant difference.
Absolutely.
Um.
Keep that a little bit, please, Greg. That's hotel.
That's hotel. So meal and incidental, eighty dollars.
Yeah, I wanted to make a comment. And it's not just meals normally, it's incidentals, which is taxis, tolls, parking.
Yep.
It's, it's not airfare, trains, rental car and hotel, but it's everything else you might spend.
Yep. So like, yeah, so when I look at that first one in Miami, that two hundred and whatever was probably the, the other stuff. I didn't go down far.
Yeah, parking and all.
Yep. So. Right. Yeah, that's not, that's not the tip. That might be. Right. Yeah, that's not, that's not the tip. That might be feeding the meter for a couple hours.
Yep.
Uh, but yeah, you know, twenty-dollar breakfast, twenty-two-dollar lunch, thirty-three-dollar dinner, five-dollar incidental, sixty dollars or eighty dollars for that, that day. That makes sense. That, that, you, you could probably do that in the one. A- a- as importantly, you're gonna, cause it, as Richard mentioned, you know, um, the cup, the cup of coffee. I am not a breakfast guy. My idea of a breakfast is to grab a protein bar and a protein shake for out of the house. Um, and I might have, um, you know, a mild, mild little snack at ten o'clock. Um, lunch is usually pretty light, but the dinner meal, to me, it could be loaded, right? Um, if we give a day at, you know, at eighty dollars, I can do that. I can, Sunday night, I can go in, buy a week's worth of protein bars and, and protein shakes and have that for my morning breakfast. And rather than spend a hundred dollars throughout the course of the week, I might spend sixty on Sunday night. Makes sense. I'm using my discretionary funds. I'm gonna take that forty dollars, put it on the end on, on my dinner and have steak and lobster instead of just steak. But, um.
Oh, plus your time is worth something reviewing all the expense reports. If you calibrate the time it takes for you to tick and tie all that, that, that number adds up too by way of.
I haven't heard tick and tie in a long time. That's Yeah, yeah. Oh, and, and yeah, yesterday I spent the better part of two hours digging through receipts and tying in budget line item code and stuff like that.
Maybe I had done it last week, a couple hours on one receipt as well.
On one, and that's the one that I got yesterday. So between the two of me. Yeah, it could be the two, which we got four hours sunk into that.
Well, thank you for working on this.
Yep, and we'll keep going. Um, but uh, just as, as a little more follow-up, uh, we did attend graduation Friday afternoon. Uh, Deputy Porter is, is out. She's working, uh, she's in her field training process right now. Uh, with Deputy Stenavall. So they're, they're out cruising the countryside right now as we speak.
Jake or John?
Jake. Yep, so they're uh, they, things, she's excited to be on the road, excited to be working back out of the academy, sixteen weeks at one time. And uh, it's nice, good to have her back and.
Are they there the whole sixteen weeks? Do they get any breaks to come?
Yeah, they come home on the weekend.
Come home on weekends.
Yeah. But otherwise, no, there, there's, there's a holiday in the middle. So like fourth of July, she had fourth of July off. So she came home on the third and and then to go back up to some of that.
Good.
Yep.
Good, good. All right, all right, thank you.
Greg, the only question I had. Are the bids open for those two cars and trailer?
Yeah, yeah, they're on. I think we put September. Let, let me look. I'm gonna be.
Is that listed?
Uh, it's on the Facebook. It's on our Facebook page.
On our Mills County site? Is it?
It is.
I was just wondering if you had a.
September third.
Have you had some interest?
Yes.
Good. Now they're them run.
Well, they can't say that they're running because it took somebody getting them going to get them.
Yeah.
They, they had a run, but it's awful hard to say that they run.
Yes.
Where is that?
You can't just go plug the key in and start it.
Was it on our website?
No, it's, I had, we have it on our Facebook page, I guess. I don't know that.
Okay.
It's on our website. I could.
Okay.
I'll make sure I give a Patrick.
Put it on there. More, more people, more bidders, more interest. Good.
Thank you.
You coming?
Thanks Greg.
Audrey did say these would be coming. She was looking at them, so. Computers? Yeah. Assuming it's to go tech. CDW. We've used them a ton, but I couldn't tell you where they're from.
Yeah, we could use them.
Thirty-two, twenty-three, eighty-eight. Two workstation, two monitors, two keyboards and mouse. I'm good with that if you don't mind.
No, but Patrick, Patrick says they're due, they're due because they're probably oh, look, I haven't made a mention that we purchased a computer and equipment. At a total price of thirty-two, twenty-three, eighty-eight.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of two computers, monitors and lap, uh, keyboards. For building and zoning for the fee of thirty-two, twenty-three, eighty-eight to CDW. Is there any discussion?
Yes, my only thought is, I believe there were some pretty newer computers that Public Health was using, um, before they downsized. And so I, I, I think the computers would be there, I guess. Are they having troubles with their computers? Are they acting up or?
Then I'm not aware of Patrick Handel's side. So I know he keeps all our computers updated and running, so.
Yes.
There he is.
There he is.
Yep, we have a motion and a second. We're in discussion right now. Uh, there was a question brought up. Uh, Jack, go ahead.
Computers for public health. When public health was downsized, is there, could we not use some of those computers or, you know, why, why is it now that we're having to change out these computers? Is there actual problems with the computers?
Uh, based on age and yeah, performance. So they've got two desktops in that office and a laptop. And there's due for replacement. Yep. Public health, uh, yeah, there are good computers there, but those are owned by the board of health. And we're about the grant, so I don't know how we figured that part out. Board of Health would have to, if there's ownership, we'll sort of handle it, yes.
I would like to ask about that, but that's, that's my view.
That'd be something Caitlin would have to research. I'm not sure if she was there with that.
Yeah.
The current tracking departments over that particular grant.
Yeah.
Is this a budgeted item that they have in there?
Yes, they budgeted five thousand per new computers. I had on the desk for two desktops, uh, just cause I didn't have the laptop quote back yet. I do have it now, but I don't know if we're gonna do it separately.
Yeah.
Since it was, but for the two computers, it's two thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. They've budgeted five thousand for computer replacements for this year. Uh, they're gonna keep the monitors and just replace the towers.
Will the four ninety-three's come out?
Yes. We'll bring that back next week.
Are they gonna do the keyboards?
Yes, keyboards.
So what's your total then, Patrick?
Uh, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, ninety-two cents. Now, we can certainly go down that road with Board of Health for, you know, we have other computer replacements for those departments. So if that, if there's a way to make that work, we have a you know, some computers that we can use for other replacements.
Were those computers brand new? Are you aware of Jack or they?
I mean, I think they were.
But they were, computers these days are outdated the day you buy them. So it just scares me if they're anything a year old or.
There's some that are probably a year and a half, two years old. I'll be the newest. For the area, the moment just sitting fucking does, but.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what public health times are either for.
They're just sitting down there and I would make the assumption that, you know, we'd probably prefer, if we can find a way to use something like that, to use those instead of sending, spending twenty-seven hundred dollars on a earmark.
Yeah, it's almost the same, but we accept need for computers. So even if they weren't used for building zoning, we can make that work somehow with portable.
Do we have any computers anywhere else in any other department that, you know, these could be, we could use those computers for this? I mean, is there, is there any other way around not doing the twenty? Twenty-seven, ninety-two?
No, probably no other ones outside of those public health computers.
The sticker there could be the grant, you know.
Just gotta look into it.
Right, but you know, they was bought with grant money. They've been paid for. Fine, but whether they can be used out of the public health department, I don't know.
Those usually don't intermingle much.
I'll ask.
Okay, any other discussion? Uh, Mr. Crouch, your motion was up to thirty-two, twenty-three, ninety-eight. And that was revised to twenty-seven, ninety, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, ninety-two.
That'd be fine.
Any other discussion? Hearing that, we have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of two computers for building and zoning for, from CDW for twenty-seven, twenty-nine, ninety-two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you. Any new business, gentlemen?
Uh, the only thing, I'm sure you all saw your email that, uh, Sajik Glenwood requested to meet with Amber, Travis, and then a member of the board of supervisors. I requested that I be our representative for that meeting. I've talked to, uh, Mitch and Angie about it as well as Travis quite in detail. And I have Patrick coming up with everything that he does for the city of Glenwood through that agreement. But, um, I don't know if you guys would prefer that we at least whether or not I'm the person that does it, we vote on it the next meeting and make it official somehow. That way we can discuss it. If, if there's somebody else that would like to do it and you'd like.
Yeah, I'd like to do it too. I think we could, I think we should all be involved. It's a, it's an agreement.
I think we all as well.
Absolutely.
I think so too. I think Patrick should be at that meeting.
Yeah.
So do we wanna do, cause I'm sure it's not just gonna be one meeting.
Yeah, let's, and if we can, if we can all make it, we will. And if we, there's only one of us that can make it, that's.
They can always, they can, well, we can always bring them to our meeting here on Tuesday mornings.
What are the rules regarding, um, because this is a contract, I don't know for sure, but we go into closed session?
I think only to discuss our side, not when we're talking together, right?
Go into closed session.
I'd have to look at that.
That's what I want.
Yeah, that'd be interesting to see if we could go into closed session because it'd be good for us to be on the same page.
We go through this every few years and it's a, it's, it's something we all need to be involved in, so.
I agree.
And I, I'm gonna send a request back to London. We need to push out a couple because with our special election, I'm not gonna have time to do that at this point. Um, since the contract goes to the end of June, then we've got some, some wiggle in time, so.
Sure. Any other new business?
Uh, we did receive a quote from Tyler Technologies. We're meeting with them next week.
Is it Tyler or Kyler?
Kyler.
Kyler, okay. I, I saw Tyler up there, but somebody's named Kyler, stuck in my head.
And then I'm, connecting second. Introduced you both positions this week and hope to have somebody, thanks for both at the end of the week.
Great. Did you have multiple applicants for facilities manager? Well, there's no for the business. I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight fifty-two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn at eight fifty-two. Any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We are adjourned.
We will be meeting back here at ten-thirty with the blood committee. I'm gonna call it. I don't know what else to call it.
Ten-thirty?